Hey, Tim, how's it going?
Great, how are you, Lisa?
Doing good.
Good.
Am I reverbing right now?
Nope.
I think that'll probably be better.
DG.
Hello, everybody.
Good to see you.
Good to see you all.
Amy, Amy, it's important that all those computers be muted.
Recording in progress.
Everybody's got to mute their computer. I just muted mine. I did turn my audio on. Yes, I did. But I'm not. I have to be muted too.
I was stationed at Temple in Panama City. Four years in Panama with a white sugar man. I really wanted to settle the amendments. There's no care somewhere at all.
It is a little after four o'clock. But we don't have, I can't see. We only do the forum, but we don't have. Two people are on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so Tim and DG are on soon. Hi, guys. I know Stephen Ramirez was also planning on joining us. So that's six of us still missing. Yeah, I think we should. We've got a lot to talk today.
Let's go ahead and start our plan. Let's do roll call, please.
Okay, Richard Seiler. Joe Man. DG Garcia.
Here.
Tim Paulson.
Present.
Peter Ramirez. Jen Bonker.
Here.
Dale Robbins.
Do we expect Dale?
He said that he was available and was on his calendar. Megan, can you kind of monitor and see if they come on over time would be great because I can't.
And just let us know if they do come on, so no one may worry. Do we want to make a motion to excuse for two that are not here, Dale Robbins and Stephen Ramirez? So moved.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we'll excuse those to Dale Robbins and Stephen Ramirez. Looking at our agenda, we're going to go ahead and look at our minutes from last meeting, which was in August. We did not have a September meeting, the workshops for the parking standards is a big thing we're going to work on today and believe. And then we're going to just finish up our review of the other amendments that we pretty much concluded our homework on. I think that all our actions since then are just give those to move to the next level. And then get our reports and and then the citizens' comments that we have and also let us know if citizens online too, so we can pay attention to that. And that's there. Approval of the minutes from August 10th meeting, is there any comments or questions on that, those minutes? And your motion to approve them is written?
Motion to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
opposed? It's ready to tell the minutes are three. Lisa, I think at this point for you to go through the parking.
Yeah, so let's kick it off here. So I just want to remind you all of the per dusty amendments we need to make our parking code. The whole update minimum vehicle and bicycle parking requirements to be more consistent with the land standards based on use. We found that our requirements range wildly. Anywhere from ridiculously low to ridiculously high. And so we also wanted to eliminate the maximum parking limits. There is the ability to do administrative variance. Then the strength that you have at parking right now, it's set at 150% of the minimum. And we have recently seen quite a few requests for administrative variances on that. Parking is expensive and land is expensive, so I dare say that a developer is not going to want to build more parking than what they need. Also, we wanted to update electric vehicle infrastructure standards based on WAC 51500429, which is going to change again this July, so we're going to need it a little bit more for what we have done last time to make it a little bit more generic. And we want to create consistency between city development and river district development regulations regarding parking standards. And again, one of the things that we have had some comments, and when we get to River District, we'll get into those. Hopefully Joe will be here to present his comments that I will share through the conversation about Catholic. And you can then weigh in on what your thoughts are on that. So first of all, I want to talk about the changes that we did make to the parking standards. And they were based on the ITE, Institute of Engineering Engineers Parking Generation Annual, which is the bill for the parking. And it's based on a number of surveys and studies that they have done to determine what peak demand is and what the average is. And we generally try to stay with the average with an understanding that with an understanding that people could always go more. They can also request variances to reduce the non-parking. So there is administrative variances. So there is some flexibility written into the code, but we do want to make sure that we're getting enough parking where we need to. And it's kind of interesting because if you look at like the developments that happened in county before we incorporated the big office complex on Appleway and the Lady Blake Road, where it's so vastly overparked, if they ever fill that parking lot. Or Meadowwood Tech Campus again, which was HP headquarters back in the day. Those are so vastly overparked that it's ridiculous. But on the other hand, I've got credit unions saying, gosh, even at 150%, what our record is based upon, the number of employees in the size of my building. I have all this other data that shows me that this many parking spaces more than that's not. And so as an example, so we thought it was worthwhile to look and we did find that in some cases we were underparking, in other cases we were overparking. There's a lot that were fine. And so let's see where that goes. So we have worked out this a couple of times, so I want to talk about what's different version of the city development code. In section 10, 3D, then for, we removed the signage requirement for areas reserved for bicycle parking. Joe Frank made that comment in the River District about it being an unnecessary sign requirement, and I tend to agree. So we removed it in the development code. Also, section 10, 3D, 72, we simplified the required evening charging infrastructure by simply referencing the Appleville WAC, which is based upon comments that we got both from Rick and from Joe. And we're going to actually clean that up even a little bit more. Today I will share with you some additional revisions on that. Based on again Mr. Seiler's stellar review. So in terms of River District Development Regulations, what's different? Again, we removed the signage requirements for bicycle areas and simplified evening charging infrastructure. There are also comments received by Joe Frank who reinstated that if he's not here, I will go through them with you so that you can make your comments and I will share with you the logic as to why we changed it. Again, part of it was to make it consistent, but part of it is because there are some things that we have observed.
So I think his comments were in our packet that you gave us. I don't know if they're in here, but they were in the
Yes, they were. Yes, the online one is the same as your favorite copy. I just find it easier for me to make notes on these. And my apologies for the trees that we killed. We actually killed a few new cartridges too. So I want to, what I'd like to do now, so let's go back first to the city development code. And I got to stop sharing this screen so I can share a different screen. So there's not a lot of changes in here, but I want to take you to just to point out where I did make changes. Again, as you said before, all of these were changed, all of the parking. And I actually think we didn't change a ton, but we changed some that were pretty significantly undercounted. And as I said, there were some that were a little overcounted. So again, please excuse my technical difficulties. It's been one of those days. All of these are the same as what we worked out the last two times. So here is where we eliminated a requirement for signage here. Reserved areas, there is set aside for bicycle parking, should be clearly marked and reserved for bicycle parking. So oh, I'm so sorry. Thank you. Thank you, Kirk. Thank you for letting me know that I wasn't. What's nice is here, I can see that it's up there and everybody else can see that I'm seeing them. So I'll just have to remember to look back when I make a switch. Thank you. So anyhow, so here's what we, here's where we
Is there a page number or a manual that I can look at?
Yes, so that would be page eight of the vehicle and parking. The other place where we have a change here from what you saw last time has to do with the evening parking rules, which as you saw in your packet, I provided you with the code, you're going to have to that they have changed the code and they're changing it again in July as it relates to electric vehicle parking. So this is on page 13. So I've got three changes that I want you to be aware of, but I will make before we finalize this. And what was in your packet? The first is it has to do with these exemptions. So despite my review, Rick caught the fact that there are some changes to the exemptions happening in 2023. So I'm changing, I'm going to change the wording to say that applicability, the following requirement shall apply instruction of new buildings except the buildings with occupancies as exempted as exempted in WAC 51-50-0.429.1. And that's the paragraph that's changing. Also for so we'll eliminate those. Also for required evening charging infrastructure. We actually referenced a table here that doesn't exist currently, but will go into effect in 2023. But it is contained in the same section. So I'm just going to delete the reference to the table and simply reference as provided for in WAC 51500490429.2.
We are motion for these changes.
We don't.
We don't. We're working. But I would appreciate if any of these changes I'm proposing, if anybody has any further questions.
So that everybody understands that WAC is written where we have requirements until July of 2023. And then there's in the second part with the same section numbering and everything is the requirements from July 22, 2023 and beyond. And so that's kind of the right. And that's why I think this is exactly the reason is that so do I expect that WAC to be very fluid in its changes.
And I will say that generally I do not like to include the WACs in our code because the WAC numbers change all the time. But in this particular case, I don't see us having a lot of options since it's obviously in blocks.
So we're just, just to clarify, we're just, we're just accepting the WAC description and not creating our own out of WAC.
Yes, we're not going to be out of that.
And I think the other thing is a lot of the requirements in the back are LNI responsibilities.
Yeah. No, that's absolutely true, but we also have to be doing it from a site plan permanent standpoint and from a building plan standpoint. So it's important that we have this in here and that we are calling it out to our developers, particularly the awareness about the change that's going to happen in July. And so, and I think as I talk to home builders and commercial builders, they are well aware and they're very skeptical of what the requirements are, so it's as I'm sure you would imagine. Anyhow, so that was that. And then I did also want to, Rick, you've had a series of questions and comments that I had actually looked at and can respond to. Do you want to go through those or do you want to?
I didn't have access when I was looking at this, Lisa, but this is for the drive-through stuff?
Yes.
The five foot setback that's required for that, does that meet our standard for the the distance between the different zones?
So
I thought our standard was bigger than that.
It's actually, it's a, so it's the minimum, there's an alternate for six feet, so we need to change those to six feet.
Okay.
First of all, that's number one, and that's the minimum. We still have to meet the landscaping standard, but there is an alternate with the fence that allows them to do just six feet.
Okay, okay.
For that, for the type two, it's a type two. That was number one. So for all of these, we need to change it to six feet. Number two, and by the way, I just copied this from the River District. And so I should have been a little bit, I should have looked a little closer. Mind add. So abiding a mixed use abiding the mixed use or just the mixed use zone. Service areas and stacking lanes must be set back five feet from all outlines, but mixed use zones. And the setback must be, and again, it's the six feet. So again, we're using that six feet for all three of these. And it just needs a little cleanup because we can change our landscaping standards. We'll clean it up in the River District one as well to be, to be consistent with their standards, although they have not changed their landscaping standards yet.
That was, I think it said abiding a mixed used or commercial zone in the first sentence. Talked about a commercial or industrial zone in the second. And I'm not sure if we need to include industrial zone in this.
You don't, you don't include it at all. We've got our regulations that are dealing with that. And actually, the commercial or mixed use, a commercial use in a mixed use zone and industrial, it's also, they're all type twos. The only thing that's different is if it's residential to industrial. I'm not going to go through the tables and the little grammatical errors that you thought, Rick. I appreciate that. I appreciate that.
That's why I sent you, so you don't have to.
Yeah, but I did want to, you did ask a question about wake-up coffee.
And the only reason I did is because that diagram has that little statement at the bottom.
You know, and that diagram is a good statement. I don't think that state, I certainly, I'm happy believing that. It's terrible diagram.
Right, because there's an acceptable and there's a not acceptable on it. And then there was a, a thing that said parking and driveways away from pedestrian areas. Yet none of our discussion talks about pedestrian areas.
And it doesn't. So we do still have a requirement elsewhere in the mixed use zones related to the, we're trying to create the pedestrian environment, so you shouldn't have those driveways through. Now, in the case of wake-up coffee, they had an exception because they couldn't make it work on that site.
Okay.
They minimize the amount of collision between the building and the sidewalk.
Well, they also, they also run the queue line through the parking area.
They do, but it doesn't block the aisle width or wide enough that people can still get in. So that's, but we didn't have that standard because we sold this to the River District because we didn't have a standard when that went through.
And my comment really was related to when you start having queue lines on most of these, whether they're coffee shops or McDonald's or whatever, because you can look at McDonald's in the Safeway parking lot there. You start seeing queue lines that go through parking lots. And whether they interfere with parking or not is always questionable. But I see, and I'll go to some people's favorite if they aren't from around here, the In-N-Outs. You look at those and they have the serpentine through their parking lots often because their, their queue lines are 25 cars long at dinnertime, a lot of the times at these places. And so, so when we say we can't have a queue line going through a parking lot.
It's not that it can't go to the parking lot. We can't obstruct.
You're right. That's what it says. Yes, yeah.
And so it can be done in like, the same thing with the pedestrian. So when you, and we require this elsewhere on the code. So if we have our pedestrians crossing, whether it's a drive aisle for a parking lot or whether it's a queue line, we have them meet crosswalks.
Right, right.
So there's, so we do accommodate. So we didn't have to fit all of those in this one because they're dealt with elsewhere. But, but I just want to let you know that, yes, I actually pulled up the site plan because that was from a long time ago, but I barely remember it. And I did look and I did confirm that we, and actually, we had had kind of some of these discussions with them, even though we didn't have standards, we talked about the fact that, you know, if it's going to impact your ability in minimum parking plans, that's a problem. So anyhow, so that was, that was all I had.
There was one other thing that I noticed and I don't think I wrote it down for you. You define, we define here, you've got to remember now what it is, but you have three things for drive-throughs. You have a service area, you have a queue area, and you have an order area. And I don't recall what section I meant now, but
No, it's actually at the very beginning.
When you do that, you define what a queue area is and you define what a, what a service area is. You do not define what an order area is. I don't care if you define it as much, Lisa. I just noticed you don't define it and you define the other two.
Yeah, so a drive-through facility, they also have a third part, an order menu. But I almost feel like that's something that might be
Well, I would say the same with the service too, but I noticed you added definition for service and you added definition for the other. Okay, okay. I'm just telling you, that's what I saw was just that. But I forgot to write that down.
Yeah, yes. And if you feel like you want me to clean up some of this language, other language, I think, like I said,
You got my comments. I'll let you figure that out.
All right. Anybody else have anything on the parking standards for city development? Great, but let's go to, close this out now. And here's to propose River District. And again, I wanted to, I did include in your packet Joe Frank's comments. And some of it, in fact, it might be better to pull up his and walk through those just so that we can deal with them one at a time. Again, everything that we talked about in terms of changes will happen in River District also, so we don't have to recreate the wheel there. So he started out by saying parking standards for the River District SAP were intentionally different from the rest of the world. These differences were even more extreme back in 2008. As a developer, the season of our purchase with any ongoing parking concern, sure that you On, uh, as a developer, the season of our purchase with any ongoing parking concern, sure that it's a parking department, SAP. We believe many of the proposed changes are indirect, have to, have to the River District SAP to use parking laws. And I think that we do very much try and use parking lots also in our development. Um, and I wonder, I want to point, a couple of things that I would share with you is that. Until the neighborhood commercial went next to Orchard Park. Um, we hadn't really seen any commercial in River District. And so that was really the first test of it, if there's new kids or, or adequate. I will say that there are some, when we get into multifamily, we've actually seen in Bitterroot that some of it's not working very well. Um, and we're making minor tweaks to it, not major tweaks, finer tweaks, but one of the things that, that, um. Mr. Frank took issue with was the changes to Tandon Park, and I've, I've worked in a lot of jurisdictions. Uh, through the course of my career, and almost no one counts Tandon Park, even.
Yeah, and that behind the garage door?
Yes, so it's so, so instead of counting, instead of, so you have two parking spots in your garage, you have two in front of the garage. Well, the reality is that if you only have two parking spots, and one is in the garage, and one is directly in front of it in the driveway. That's setting yourself up for a problem because most houses, it's not all top three, but most top three have two vehicles. And it creates a problem, jockeying everything else, and so people tend to find, or more, or even worse. Part of the garage is filled up with stuff, so they don't even have parking in the garage.
And that you can't control if there's counting it, but I think you can control the end of parking, so.
Yeah, so that's, so that is one of the things that, that, that's one of my suggestions. Again, may feel differently as, but it, but we've seen it, um, we've seen it in Bitterroot, there are parking problems in Bitterroot, we've posed.
Yes. A lot of apartment complexes end up with parking lot problem because, uh, the child has a third car, you know, or whatever, so.
Or you have visitors, I mean, it's great. So anyhow, so long story short, um, that, I did want to share that thought with you. Um, so this was, this was the comment as it related to Tandon. And, um, uh, I'm gonna, as we go through these, I'm really hoping that you all will. Speak up if you see something that is concerning to you, if you want something changed from what has been proposed. Um, I, but I'm going to share my logic with you a- as well as Joe's comment. Um, can you just show the comments on Frank? I, oh, I'm not, thank you.
We, we do have, um, in.
Yes.
They're after the city code that we just did for parking. And then, and then they come before, they come before the. Well, I guess they're just after.
So, just, just for, for the record.
They start with something like that, I don't have a page.
And so. Can we, can we minimize the people who was in meetings so that they just?
It might come after the River District.
So the, just purple comments, red, or my, my changes, my thought process. The, the comments we commented with my changes and got my comments regarding why I'm changing them. Um, and, uh, the comments in purple were Joe's comments. And so a- again, as he said, um, his comment related to Tandon parking was, um. We have years of experience with Tandon parking, we're not allowing this sort of parking. If all it does is substantially increase the facility for standalone parking lot, which is not consistent with the old food SAP. Again, we are unaware of any issues with parking due to allowing Tandon parking situations. Um, the other thing that he says, and again, he says this to me succinctly here. Again, parking standards in the River District are intentionally different from the rest of what we like, and we're designed. And approved for used parking, we do not support the across-board increase in minimum parking departments as documented in the table below. With no real life, um, identified issues. River District is designed and built to be less car-focused, the must, does not require the same parking standards as the rest of the city. And while it may be less car-focused, I mean, the statements about the commercial, the commercial will not survive on just the walking, the walkable. Um, the, the, the walking clients in the River District, the reason why we're, they would just get into a point where there's enough food costs. To justify commercial, um, in that area, and many of the commercial clients are driving there, not walking there, so that's.
If, if we're seeing that in the little commercial area there by the coffee shop, the lunch shop, and the pizza place too, is that gets. Very crowded, uh, say at least, you know.
Yes. So, um, and, and again, I think that we recognize when there, recognize, exactly recognize this in City Development Code. The River District Development Code does give a credit for twenty percent, uh, twenty percent reduction for shared park. That, and, and I've seen that in other communities as well, I do agree that when you have shared parking. Um, it creates a little bit more flexibility, usually the, 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 the peak times can vary a little bit between uses. And whatever you need for that turnover, you, you're kind of sharing the turnover spaces, so it actually does make sense. Um, so we, we didn't eliminate that River District, in fact, we added it to, to the city's development. Um.
You know, Lisa, can I say one thing too, if you look at Creedence Stone's development in Spokane, at Kendall Yards. They have a community that was designed a lot for the, the, the real tight size of it and stuff. But if you look at it too, they also have some very large parking lots behind the, the businesses that, that run through that Kendall Yards main street. They're very large parking lots, so they are expecting people like us to go to Kendall Yards and enjoy an evening here. Just like they are expecting the residents there to walk through the Kendall Yards and enjoy the evening here.
And there's a big difference. City of Spokane is a huge urban center, there's a, they have a much, they have a much larger population in, uh, within the walking shed. Number one, number two, they're also a transit hub, and so they have lots of available transit. And transit serving directly to this commercial area.
But what I'm saying is, I can bring a lot of parking lots too, to support that.
Yes.
Because, and that's what, I mean, I like to go to the River District, I don't live in River District other than in Rocky Hill. I don't walk over to River District to enjoy the pizza place there, you know, I have to drive, and that's. But, I mean, as much as we like to think that these businesses, like you said earlier, that they won't support just the walkers. They have to have that outside clientele to come in for them to be a viable business. And, and so, riding parking, it's not. I mean, that, I don't want to have food lots everywhere either, I don't want what we have at, at Apple Way and, and, uh, really like, road there, but. And I, I, just as a contrast, because I think he used the, the Kendall Yard about parking and, and whatnot, and I, I think the parking at Kendall Yards is. Very.
And there's, and there's significant on-street parking in close proximity as well. People, if you can't find a parking spot and you go there, it's hard to find a parking spot. You can at least find a parking spot in, uh, within a few blocks. Um.
I think it's, Lisa, I think you make a really good point that, um, you know, Kendall Yards is served by public transportation. River District is not. And I think, I don't know if that increases or decreases the number of spots needed, as, I'm a resident of, of the River District. I see absolutely no problem with the parking so far, uh, at least on the small commercial area that's near Orchard Park. I don't know what it's going to look like once it gets built out, and we see what the Noel District or whatever are calling up these days down by Harvard Road. What that's going to look like as far as the eighty-seven units going in there, plus all the commercial mixed use, but. Um, I think it's important distinction to make sure we understand that currently it's not being serviced by STA on a permanent basis.
Right, and so.
And why, why, why do you say that the existing group apps for existing homes for traffic is not adequate to support the businesses that have moved in there?
I understand, yeah.
I mean, why, why, why do you say that?
Why do I say that? Because, because, um, if it were the case. Um, we wouldn't have seen commercial development happen before, they're drawing from, when, when you do a market shed analysis. You're looking at, um. A radius of five miles, ten miles, twenty miles. Now, these are probably not businesses that are looking at a radius of twenty miles, but they are probably looking at a radius of ten miles.
I, 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 I question that because there's no parking.
Thank you.
I, I mean, I, I, and to me, they look like little neighborhood kinds of, of operations.
Yes, and the residential one, the ones that are in the residential zone are specifically more neighborhood oriented, but they draw a lot of people. A lot of people are parking in Orchard Park, um, parking lot, and they're, you know, which is fine.
Yeah.
But we have, we have a parking problem over at Orchard Park also.
We also have a parking, I'd say, and I think it's narrow and very constrictive around.
Oh, it is.
That, that harvest and, and whatever street that is in front of those businesses, so.
I, I, sorry, I disagree, just, I disagree that there's a parking problem, I just can't see it, I. I can leave my house, which is, I should probably walk for the exercise, but I could drive over and grab a pizza. And I have no problem parking there, six o'clock on a Friday night, maybe I'm just lucky, I don't know.
Okay, and so, well, let's take the dive, and that was kind of his overview comment, let's take the dive into the specific changes. So there are, so I wanted to differentiate these two, there's such a thing as accessory caretaker residence. So that would be a caretaker, maybe it's, you see it often with like mini storage. Where you have a home for somebody who's taking care of that business, or it could be some, some other type of business, since we don't allow them to go to stay. Um, uh, other, some other sort of business where you have a caretaker's residence. Um, and the River District does not require any parking spaces, we said one per unit. Same with accessory dwellings, accessory dwelling units, we don't regulate the ownership or relationship to the owner. Um, because it has, it, there's, it, it's not a perfect place in these only organs to try and do that. However, if you have a renter, you want to have at least one parking space for that renter. And because, even if it starts out as a mother-in-law apartment, eventually it's going to become a rental, or it's going to become, uh. Uh, the ring generations, uh, res- residents. And, again, so not requiring a parking space may be underserving, and keeping in mind that we only require two parking spaces. For a single-family residential. So that's the logic there, um, uh, with regards to two families' home, home housing. They were only requiring one point five spaces, a parking spaces per, um, ITE trip generation manual says one point seven five, and I think that's probably a little more accurate. But again, that's, um, uh, that was the basis, that was the methodology that we used, we were, we were comparing these to. The trip generation, or the apartment generation, I don't know. Multi-family housing, we had multi-family housing that had, was based upon a number of bedrooms. I will tell you that from a, from a review standpoint, that's super problematic. Because we're doing the site plan reviews, and then building plans change as they're constructing it. And they start paving it, and so they build all the site infrastructure, and then they start changing the number of bedrooms, and it never gets back through the process. Uh, the average, if you're just looking at the average, it's one point seven five parking spaces per dwelling unit, so rather than trying to. Do a calculation based on, you know, some one bedroom, one bedroom. It is five hundred square feet, square feet or larger, two-bedroom units, three-bedroom or greater units, and having different standards for each. Um, much, it's just one more simple, I'd just say one point seven five. Um, specialty housing, not making a change. So automobile repair and rental, um, they had one space for five hundred gross square feet. Um, this is one where we often see parking problems, uh, anyhow, if people haven't adequately, um, accounted for them. Uh, ITE trip generation manual and our city development code does, uh, provide for one space per three hundred and fifty gross square. And that's probably, and, and actually, the range is much larger than that, if, if you saw this stain. Um, uh, and that's, there's a seasonality to it too. Um, after the first snow flies, um, those tired places will find parking spot anywhere near you. Um, again, uh, the next one was, uh, cultural centers, museums, and libraries, and athletic clubs, gyms, et cetera. It's one space for two hundred and fifty gross square feet. Hotels and motels, um. It's once, uh, again, ITE, uh, has one space for guest room plus one space per employee on the largest ship, plus one. One space per one hundred and fifty gross square feet of meeting or conference rooms. Um. Restaurants, bars, and ice cream, ice cream parlors and similar uses. Uh, River District had one for two hundred, we're suggesting one for one hundred and fifty. And so these are the minor, these are minor changes. Um, but again, representing, um, representing the, um. Representing the, uh, what, what, what I think we, we see is pretty common, and they are only based on averages. I'm not looking at the, we're not looking at eighty percentile or anything like that, we're looking at. Um. Theaters, auditoriums, stadiums, gymnasiums, community space, one space for three fixed seats, one space for one hundred and fifty gross square, whichever is greater. Uh, industrial and manufacturing uses, and this was consistent with what we had in City Development Code, and it has. Kind of again, proven to be, um, not adequate, the thought of one space for two employees on the largest ship. What the heck? Think about that for a second, and if you have two ships and there's an overlap, so, um. It, to think that most of these industrial users are carpooling, um, is maybe, um. Aspirational, but probably not realistic. Self-service storage facilities, which we don't actually allow, but we may when we get through RV and mini storage, so I figured I'd put it in there, and that's. ITE recommends two spaces per two hundred and fifty units. Um, warehousing, one space per one thousand gross square feet, and once, or one space per employee. Um. Childcare centers having more children and nursery preschools, that is the one where we do see problems. Now, you only see the problems, uh, at pickup and drop off, but, um, it's, it is quite the logjam. Uh, when the preschool, um, is dropping off or picking up, and, um. I think it's gotten a little better, um, as they advise parents to use other, other routes, but it is still, um. The one I have to go through there at nine AM morning, when the preschool's open. Chapels and mortuary areas, um, it's one per one hundred gross square feet. Supportive housing, um, we're just changing the name on that, um, because we made those changes to the code earlier. We no longer have, we're pretty good, we're pretty supportive housing. Hospitals, not that we're even going to get them on the new district, but if we do, the, um. It should be, uh, four spaces per patient that are two point five spaces per one thousand square feet, whichever is greater. And, uh, elementary and middle school, one space per eight students, high schools are one space per four students. And colleges and universities are four spaces per one thousand gross square feet, because of course. That's a little bit different of a scenario, because students are coming and going, and they don't, they don't stay on campus the whole, the whole time. Participant and spectator sports facilities, um, sixty spaces for outdoor field, or one space for one hundred gross square feet for indoor facilities. Um, this one space for one hundred and fifty gross square feet doesn't even make sense if it's an outdoor facility. On. Recreational vehicle and uh cataphracts, not making any changes. And so I don't think there's, I don't think that these are major changes. I don't think that there's tons of changes. I don't think that we're going to be extreme. They're minor tweaks, but again, it's a new commission to decide whether or not. Um, you want to recommend those for the city council. So um I'm going to pause on this before we get into the rest of it for just a second. Let's see if um if anybody has had any questions. Or concerns about or would like to see some changes.
One, one thing, I I want to just make a point, it appears that almost every change in the River District matches what we have in our city code. For the rest of everybody.
Yes.
And so, so it's not. Doing a whole lot different than what we've asked for city like the city of Lutherville to make them pretty much the same.
The intent was precisely that. The intent was to to create consistency. We're trying to move to the point where we can actually codify the River District SAP as an overlay district within our city development code. And I think that's, and and you've heard me talk about this before, it's a big lift. But from a transparency standpoint for the public and for the development community, I think it's a super important thing for us to get to. And so the the two standards that are most challenging were landscaping and parking. And I think that those, I I think that this is moving us in that direction. We will um. In fact, Greenstone has has at one point indicated that they may want to consider looking at the the landscape design standards that we've adopted. Because they can always do more, but ours are less, ours are less on this.
So when you do a consistent parking, that would be a compliance with the proposed rules.
It doesn't change it there, it's, he needs this word, don't say it, how should I not say it? They're legal non-conforming.
Okay.
They're legal non-conforming, that it doesn't, it doesn't change anything and until they change their use.
Okay.
Or add on or whatever, they don't have to meet these requirements.
Okay.
Um.
Just just a editorial note, the money is that table on the River District appears to have writing above it and below it. Um, I don't, it doesn't have a table number, but it's in number letter. I think, I think all that writing should be above the table.
Oh, yeah, so that's, that's just, that's just a continuation of, yeah.
Yeah, I think the table just got missed, in inserted, unless it's just that way.
No, no, that's, the table's there and then there's another paragraph about disabled parking.
Oh, when it's printed, it shows that table and then all the paragraph. So that's okay, printed and what's, what you're seeing is different things that looks like.
Yeah. Um, yeah, and so there's weirdness with formatting because we have all these notes.
That's fine.
And that's, and that's, but I think the notes are super important. Um, I want to be able to read, you book, on the trail of my thought process um for these changes. So I do want to go back to the maximum, so we removed the maximum parking and um Jim was supportive of that. Um. Credit for on-street parking, we have made a change and this is, this is one of these practical things. And we've in City Development Code, we made a change because we were only allowing people. Credit for on-street parking, if there's on-street parking in front of their business. Um, uh, if they were in mixed use zones, civil debt should apply to Knox as well. If you had on-street parking in front of you, you can only count the number that's directly adjacent to your property. But you can count that towards your parking, again, trying to move forward with your concept of of trying to reduce parking. In the River District, um they allow, they allow you to count. On-street parking that's available within a hundred and a hundred feet of the property line. So the problem with that is you have numerous businesses all who are, who are counting the same parking stalls. I can't make that work. And so our recommendation, and this is just from a purely pragmatic standpoint. You can't double, triple, quadruple counting the same parking spot. That's how you unlock the parking problems. So um our recommendation is that they be allowed to count. Any of the spaces that are directly adjacent to their parks. Um, his, uh, again, he thinks it's that 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 is inconsistent with the intent of the River District. But I'm not sure how you get past the double, triple, and quadruple counting of uh on-street parking spaces. It makes it very challenging for a reviewer standpoint. Um. Parking stall standards, um they did support changes that we recommended here. And we kind of clarified this, we eliminated proverbage and actually just provided the standard in the table. Um, and we added a paragraph in here for disabled parking that was in the City Development Code. It is not here, it doesn't really matter because they're subject to ADA anyhow, so we didn't force it anyhow, but it's nice to have it called out. Um. Let's see what else. And again, we also added some language about availability of facilities, owners of off-street parking. Facilities may post a sign indicating that all parking on site is available only to residents, customers, and employees as applicable. Um, and uh they did support that as well. So. As far as bicycle parking standards go. Um, in City Development Code, we require one bicycle parking space for every uh ten students. Um, they had eight students, um they are supporting that. And we added four options for stores, bicycle parking options that that would allow them all for employee parking. Uh, or for um. Bicycle parking uh can be met by providing bicycle storage, bicycle lockers, racks or other secure storage spaces inside or outside the building. Well, that was important for multiple people because when you have one per. Um, putting a row of, uh, if you have seventy-eight units, three rows, seventy-eight bicycle parking spaces. In front of the uh, the multi-family is just so. And people are not going to use it anyhow because they're not secure storage. Um. Again, reserve area. We did, uh, we actually deleted that in on the newer version. And again, uh, the one other thing that I think other than the EB, which we already have changed. Yeah, the comment that I think, so they, we require off-street loading facilities. Uh, uh, they're intended to provide adequate space to accommodate outside the limits of large vehicles, which cannot be functionally served by normal parking stalls. Off-street loading facilities must be located in such a manner. That service vehicles do not block or intrude public rights of way or block driveways or parking area circulation. I'm sorry, but that's, that's a standard English community, so they are opposing that. The section provides unnecessarily narrow range of options for loading and unloading. Um, I'm not sure, right now it's unregulated and we have seen in River District, um loading vehicles. Are Indiana and the median area where they're um stopped and unloading. Such that people are going around the median and into the other lane of traffic to get around the uh vehicle. Uh, that's a problem.
It it's a problem, but it's also going to probably continue to happen. I mean, because that's what truck drivers do, they often will stop in the middle of the avenue and probably figure it out. I mean, I, you see it, it doesn't matter if it's a big lake, it just unfortunate, but I I think having a code is correct. But but it, I'm not sure we'll ever prevent that with.
That's, that is a fair statement and then, um, so again. And drive-through facilities, um they supported the changes there, which we just kind of the language and was kind of their votes. And then we want vehicle, it's kind of, Joe has some same comments about what's on, just reference WAC, which, as I said, normally is not my go-to. But it's particularly made, I don't think we have any choice since it's, it's going to change again in July and it'll change again after that. So I'll be at this point until it kind of stabilizes. So that's what we have for the River District. Um, you know, I, again, I'm open to your thoughts, if you bring there are things that we should. Things that um Mr. Frank commented on, that you like speaking about, I'm happy to do that. Um, again, I I just wanted to get more feedback on this. Um, I know that Joe Grubman tends to be very vague, shares comments with you. Um, so it's unfortunate that he's not, so I I'm trying to give um a fair and balanced presentation, which was, which is behind it. Questions, comments, questions?
I don't have any questions. I think you were, I, I'm confident you were pretty thorough in the explanations and I did appreciate uh Joe Frank's input. Um, you know, as we grow, parking is going to change again. And it's going to look differently, uh, and there may be more changes, but I I accept this as is.
Thank you, DG.
Mm-hmm.
Other questions or comments? Let me get out of this stuff. I need to get back to our presentation.
So it appears the silence means concurrence from our. Planning members.
And you don't really have to, you don't have to concur at this point.
I I understand, but it helps to have that occurrence.
For him to be here at this, and I don't live over there, so it's hard for me to, uh.
But I I think as we move forward, because we do have some timelines, we are losing, we want to not be. Cashing over and over and over, that's the other side of it, so. You know, he'll have his opportunity also to talk to him and maybe for us, so.
Yeah, well, and at public hearing, so.
And at public hearing.
So the next step, if you guys are, if you guys are comfortable with changes, including the changes that I just talked about today. We'll put, we'll put together the staff report, we'll get it out there, we'll get it posted, all this stuff is going to get people by Monday. Um, and um we'll get it scheduled for hearing and um then we'll invite Mr. Frank to come and share his thoughts.
Sure.
Uh, at the public hearing and um I'm sure that he can better defend his position than I. Um, and so um you may have some changes to make once the hearing is finished.
Well, the the fact that we've used the uh Parking Engineering Manual as a resource really gives us the basis. Outside of us to really focus on doing and correcting a lot of the things that we had mistakenly done. Uh, overparking or underparking or whatever it is, but I applaud the work you've done, that that hasn't been easy. But I I don't see anything I would object to at this point.
I I'm good with the way he's at least with with edits that you've talked about, so, yeah.
So I just wanted to spend on five o'clock, I'm going to go very quickly through. The other annual amendments that we'd like to bring to hearing. Um, uh, at our next meeting, and it's really just more than anything else. Um, to just re-measureize yourself, some of these we haven't talked about for six or more months. And so I just want to, I did include draft staff reports in your habit more than anything else for you. To be able to uh see if you have any questions, I'm going to just, on a very high level, just walk you through them. So there's, in addition to the parking, there are four other um amendments that we're wanting to do as we, as I talked about on my email. We were also wanting to have the RV and mini storage as a limited use in certain zones, it's just not. Uh, it's just not um ready for prime time. So I'd like to uh, we'll bring that back and continue to workshop it in December. And we can always bring that forward, not as an annual code amendment, if that is, if that is the role of this commission.
I I mean, that works for us, yeah, unless somebody's pushing us to. To have to do something special, I think we ought to just make it for our business and not.
I think it's more important to get it right. Do you have some heavy ones or nothing? I'll talk about those in my uh secretary's report. But the four that we're looking at are the building height definition, uh the manufactured homes, uh building to use requirements. Comprehensive plan amendment, uh plan map amendments and zoning map amendments. And so we'll just go. So first of all, building height, uh I just wanted to, I want to read this to you again because it amuses me every time I read it. Um, now, and and Rick, I'm here in here, you need to get out your pencil to see if you can follow this. So building height in our code is currently defined as the vertical distance above the reference data measured to the highest point in the roof. Reference data shall be selected by either of the following, whichever yields a greater height of building. One is the elevation, the highest adjoining sidewalk or ground surface within a five-foot horizontal distance of an exterior wall of the building. On such sidewalk or ground surface is not more than ten feet below the lowest grade. Or an elevation ten feet higher than the lowest grade in the sidewalk or ground surface described in subsection one. Above is more than ten feet above the lowest grade. The height of a stepped or terraced building is the maximum height of any segment of the building. Not included in the maximum height or in the standard, she needs bell towers, steeples, equipment, flagpoles and similar features which are not for human occupancy. Uh, anyhow, so that's our current building and everybody, when you get into a photographically challenged area. I've seen, I've seen four-year veterans scratching their heads saying, wow. Uh-huh. Uh, so we're proposing to change our definitions um for building height. And we'll have to add the definition for greater grade plane to match international building code. So by the way, we also follow, so we've got a disconnect, I love it when you have a disconnect, you use only code in your building code. So um that was the basis that that we are recommending. So under the International Building Code, building height is defined as the vertical distance from the grade plane to the average height of the highest surface. Not included in the maximum height or all those other things I said that were not included before. But we don't have a definition for greater grade planes, so we're going to use the building department, the building. Um, definition, a reference plane representing the average of finished ground. Level adjoining building at exterior walls, where the finished ground level slopes away from the exterior walls. Records plan shall be established by the lowest point within the area between the building and the lot line. Or where the lot is more than six feet from the building, between the the building and a point six feet from the building. In the case of any signed grade, shall be measured or determined at the signed support structures. So that's, so that's all just, um, again, that's directly out of the International Building Code. But because. Because of the way our code was written, and I'm going to say this again, I did not write this. Um, in each of our zoning districts, so ten to B, ten to C, ten to D, each of the zoning districts. Has a section on building height. And um it, in it, it defines the 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 building height again as per the definition section. So we're, uh, but talks about it in terms of method of measurement, so method of measurement, and then it reiterates what we got in the book I just read to you. Um, we're proposing to simply change for all of the zone, for all of the zones in the building height section. Just to change method of measurement, building height shall be measured as defined in Article ten one C. Simple enough. Thank you. Um, the second, um, the second, uh, amendment that we're going to be bringing to hearing is an amendment to limited use regulation, net manufacturing homes on individual lots. And again, as you will recall, right now, there is a requirement that manufactured homes will have a garage or carport constructed with light materials where nearby residences have carports or garages. The city may require a detached garage where that would be consistent with the predominant construction of immediately surrounding residences. As we have discussed, we consider that to be an environmental justice issue. Manufactured homes, although in my opinion, they should rate as affordable housing. Manufactured homes on individual, individual lots very often are the affordable choice for, um, some people. Adding a requirement to add a garage and it's not there, um, is costly and burdensome and diminishes the ability uh, for that to be an affordable option. The thing that I think probably, and we've had a number of people who are trying to get into a home um, in the, uh, in the mobile home subdivision that is, uh, South Michigan where this has been a requirement, and it's been a huge obstacle, and someone blocking was the cost to, to do so. Um, the reality is that we do not require this for single-family homes in the city. Now, I'll say that i- in most cases, people are building single-family homes with garages, but that's out of choice, not out of a regulatory requirement. And so anyhow, so that's, um, uh, it's been a request we've had, again, I probably, I think since I've been here, we've probably had four code enforcement issues with people setting mobile homes not knowing that they needed to do this or not realizing that in order to do it, they have need snow loads, which is another costly, uh, situation. And, uh, just being burdened to try and, and follow the code. And so we're proposing that we simply be equitable and not require anything more of the immediate action homes than we do of the single campus, uh, uh, site built home.
You're kind of surprised it's a requirement for a single-family site built home and a garage.
Um, it's not.
Okay.
Um, so the third amendment that we are doing has to do with, it's actually five maps in the comprehensive plan that are going to, first of all, we need to reflect, uh, change our boundaries with the central Valley School District annexation that happened, um, earlier in the year. Um, and that is the area that is just the West of Ridgeline High School. You can see on this map, it was zone R two, when it was annexed. And we also need to change the, the land use designation to Meadowwood Technology Campus, which was changed earlier this year, um, by ordinance, but it didn't, but it didn't necessarily change the official map in the comprehensive plan. So those are, so those are the two changes that are reflected in these maps. And so this is map one point three, which is just the city boundaries. And let's see if you can see, and this is, this is the area that I'm talking about that we've annexed in. And then our cultural landmarks, and Megan was good enough to update some of our cultural landmarks while we're in there making edits anyhow. Thank you, Megan. Our land use map, and this one actually, actually there's three changes to this. So we've added the annex property, which is zone R two. We have now reflected Meadowwood Technology Campus as the M two, which was, uh, changed earlier in the year, um, by city council. And the last one is, there was a piece that was, that is north of Ridgeline, where, um, when they annexed, it followed a jagged line. That was the property boundary, that was the, that was the city boundary at the time. And that was zone M two. Um, they did, when the school district annexed the property, they also did some trajectory line adjustments to make it work. And so they created a lot that was split zone. It was eighty percent dish, um, M two, but a little jagged piece of it was, um, in the, uh, in the P zone. And so we have, we do have a provision, not code, where city council, you know, by resolution, um, changed the land use designation and zoning of the, uh, of a split zone property to the majority designation for that person. And so that, so they did that earlier this year and that, and there's copy of that resolution here, in the, in the staff. So again, this is the, uh, annexed areas, um, you see the area annexed in twenty twenty-one. And finally, the street system map, which has also been updated, this is just showing your arterial, arterial and boulevards. And the last one that we're changing is the zoning map. And the zoning map, technically, all these ordinances did change the zoning map. The ordinances and resolutions have changed the zoning map. But we do specifically have the zoning map embedded in our city code, section ten two eight five. So we wanted to make sure that we officially amended the code to reflect the updated zoning map. So, um, and this is the map. And again, it's based upon Concordeville's group's annexation, Meadowwood Tech Campus land use change, and resolution twenty-two nine seven, which was the centennial split zone property. And those are our, um, those are the, the, um, CPA's have been bringing forward on, on November ninth for public hearing. I wanted to pause here for a second, because we shared with you the draft staff report, which that was the first time we've seen them. If anybody had any questions on the staff reports, we'll finalize them once we get our CVA out. Great. Well, then, onto secretary's report. First of all, silly me with all the technology issues that we were having. I completely forgot to introduce our new planning engineering and building practice. Kathy Cummings, she comes to us from Spokane, Kentucky. She's got, what, nineteen years of experience? Uh, in permit, yes. So, um, so we're really happy to have her on, of course, she's in her second meeting now. And she's, um, doing great. Um, Megan's getting her all else to speed and anticipation of a little Madeline's appearance in the not good distance picture.
Well, welcome. Glad to have you.
Thank you. Um, so for our next meeting, as I said, um, we do have a hearing. It's important that we do have forums, so please, please, please. If it's something you can't make it, please, please, please do let me know. Um, and we don't have any, we don't have any, if we, if we do not have a forum, we will be rescheduling that, but in the commission meeting, because I don't have.
And the date of that is?
November nine.
Yes, we got it.
Um. We will be, as I said, I, I just finished up the CVA on this, we're going to get this posted. We're going to, we're going to build the staff reports and everything, everything will go up on the website on Monday for our hearings for next week, and it will be, the, you'll notice we'll run in Friday's paper. So, um, we are ready to rock and roll on that one.
So, so will we end up with all five of them being at a public hearing next time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, but we will go through it publicly.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure I.
Yes.
I, I, this, that first one, our fucking standard would be part of our public hearing.
Yes, so we are going to be doing one public notice and we'll be, and we'll go through all five of those, um, at the, we'll take the test phone for all five of those. The deliberations are going to have to be separate. Um, so you have to separately deliberate on each one of those.
Right, well, that's essentially going through the, the process there. It's, you've already provided this, the.
Yes.
The information.
Yeah, so you're going to have to, so we have, we have identified what are the findings that need to make. And, uh, whether it does or does not, each of those findings. And then you're, like, somebody needs to make a motion to approve, approve with amendments or deny, and. So maybe this secret, many, now, for discussion.
Just a quick, Lisa, on your, on your manufactured home item.
Yes.
When your recommendation has the building height in, instead of the manufactured zone, so that there needs to reflect, uh, the manufactured home.
Thank you for touching that. It's, it's easy to make those mistakes when you're using, uh.
Copying things.
Indeed.
My crew, copying and copying.
The last thing I wanted to do under the secretary's report, I wanted to let you know that we do have two applicants for planning admission, and we have both scheduled for interviews on Friday. And one was sick, and one at the last minute realized that we had a conflict. But, uh, for those of you who've been on here for a while, you'll remember Paul Brown is interested. And so, um, I think that we will probably get both these candidates, hopefully, um, on the, uh, the council agenda for, if not, uh, the next council meeting, which I think, I think that should, might have sailed. Then, uh, then the first meeting in, uh, November. With that, I turn it over to all of you for commissioners' reports.
Does, does any of our commissioners have reports that they'd like to bring to the board?
Do, does anyone have a desire?
So, ne- next council meeting, probably should go through these, of what we're doing on, on the public hearing, because they ought to be aware of that, and we ought to go through that. So, what date is that?
So that is, that is the twenty.
That's a Friday, isn't it?
No, it's not, it's not that.
All right, well, I could be wrong.
Seventeenth?
Oh, it's the eighteen. It is the eighteen. No, I don't have my phone.
Uh, I think I'll be here, so I, I can probably do that. Yeah, if not, I'll let you know, and maybe I got to check with my wife, just to make sure I don't have a conflict yet, but I don't think I do, so. So I'll, I'll plan to go to that.
Okay, thank you. We have any citizen comments? We have any citizens on? Mr. Salver, do you have any comments for us?
Well, thank you. Good job, though, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman.
And Stephen, just a quick, uh, question, I see that you're on here, what time did you join us?
Four fifteen, my apologies for that.
Okay, thank you, no, no worries, just wanted to get it towards the minutes.
So we only didn't have the, Brown is your answer. Okay. You'll get that right in a minute. Maybe we can do that, John? I'll move.
It's always Joe.
Return. Okay. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you all for bearing with us. This has been, uh, somewhat mysterious, sort of cycle of events, but we really appreciate all of you.
Yeah, so.